It is 9:30. We will call the September meeting of the Wood County Board of Supervisors to order. I would ask the clerk to take the roll, and I assume he has done that already. We have two supervisors that I'm aware of right now appearing virtually, Supervisors Fire and Roser. Supervisor Roser is doing the invocation, and she will be doing that virtually. So if Donna's ready, does she look like she's ready? I have a screen where I can see her. Does she appear ready?
I am ready, if you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you. So it asks the body to please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
So, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
If you so desire, join me in prayer. Thank you, Father, for this day. We pray for our country, state, and county, for military personnel and the families that support them. Give wisdom and direction to elective officials as we serve those who elect us. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. We pray for our county department heads and employees. Let them know how much we appreciate the work that they do. Thank you for our many blessings and help us to be forever grateful. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everybody. That's our first virtual invocation. And for those of you who know Supervisor Roser well, she texted me yesterday and said, "I'm going to be appearing virtually," and then I got another text saying she's supposed to do the invocation. And she said, "Can I do that virtually?" And I said, "It's up to you," and her answer was, "Turn it up as loud as it goes." So Donna, can you be loud and clear if that works? Thank you very much. First thing on our agenda today is meeting from the previous session, and I have a motion to approve by Hamilton. I have a second by Bry. Any discussion, changes? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We have no excusals today. Resignations. We have a resignation of Supervisor Joseph Flue from the Census and Redistricting Committee. I didn't obtain a motion to that effect. I guess I have one by Supervisor Hamilton. And a second by, Dave, can you punch that in?
I got it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor again? Please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that motion carries. Under appointments, we have a couple today. The Health and Human Services Committee for the unexpired term ending April of 2024, Lori Nordman. Is there any objection when we take these together?
No.
No? Okay. And to the Census Review and Redistricting Committee Supervisor Waggler replacing Supervisor Joseph Flue. Is there any discussion? Again, I have a motion by Hamilton, a second by Hope Ham. All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that motion carries. That brings us to public comment this morning, and I know we have a few people here, at least a couple, I believe, that want to speak during the public comment time. The timing will be up, there's three minutes up there. We ask you to step to the microphone in the middle of the aisle there, state your name, and feel free to present.
Good morning. My name is Dorothy Schindzler from Marshville, Wisconsin. I'm here today to comment on the replies from our lawmakers. This message that I have sent to 33 Wisconsin lawmakers, from the senators, the governor, and Marshall City Council, and Wood County Board, and this is the request that I submitted. As your constituent and your boss, I demand that you do everything in your power to ban vaccine mandates and passports. This is an unconstitutional gravitation of liberty due without due process and is a critical issue to me. It is unconscionable that American freedom of movement would be threatened in attempt to coerce people to get vaccinated, even as Fauci is urging masks to be worn by the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. I will watch how you vote. I'm submitting these documents because of the time. I would like this placed in with Mr. Trent Minor. I received from Senator Bunnier and others that are all positive answers. Then one came from one of your members here, Mr. Dave LaFontaine. And his answer is this, "You are not my constituent. If your stupidity causes the death of a neighbor, you should be prosecuted just like a drunken driver that causes the death of a person." Also, my daughter, received also from the same Dave LaFontaine, "Thank you for your comments. You are not my boss, but I will do you the honor of placing you on my stupid list."
Good.
This is Mr. Fontaine's oath of office. This is the public misconduct of public office number 946.12, and I think that this goes right along with what I'm saying here. I think action should be taken by the Estes Board. I'm submitting to this for the record, on the record, so that this is looked at very closely. Thank you. Would you please walk that up to Mr. Minor? Thank you.
Mr. Minor will come back. Mr. Minor needs exercise.
Mr. Flue.
Thank you.
We're supposed to take it. Just hold your hands a little back on that point. You did well. Is there any other public comment today? Feel free to set the microphone.
I too have submitted a letter, like Donna's, the exact same letter. I sent this generated letter to each member of the board here concerning mandates of the vaccine for COVID, because I do not believe in mandating the vaccine, especially after scenes. A growing number of people being injured from the vaccine, as well as vaccinated people now being affected with COVID after receiving the vaccine. This has happened in their own family, four instances. I was shocked by the response from one of the board members named Mr. LaFontaine, who said, "Thank you for your demands. I hope when you cause a death of your stupidity, you are threatened just like a drunk driver who killed a person because they were just exercising their rights." My response to him was this, "You may not realize it, but I have already been to one funeral because of the vaccinations. I have an injured brother-in-law because of the vaccinations. I have a friend who bled from both her eyes and her nose after the second vaccination. This friend ended up having heart surgery because of the vaccinations. One of my daughter's friends ended up with belt palsy because of the vaccinations." So who's on the stupid side of the list? I asked him. You are also getting continual reports, we are getting reports of distant friends and their health being on the blitz. Your reply is absolutely insane, I told him, and uncalled for, and especially if you are representing the people of this county. If you ask me, you are drunk with power and only care about controlling the narrative, and this is shameful. People have a right and should have a right to choose what goes in their own body. Also, I'm not saying these things, not because I want to exercise my rights, but because people I know and I love are being injured and harmed by these vaccines. I'm just a concerned citizen, and now I'm seeing 12-year-old children being vaccinated. I'm shaking because of fear. This is really upsetting to me. And they're ending up with heart inflammation. This is an experimental shot, and as far as we know, there has been no animal testing, continued animal testing. I would like to ask a few questions to you. Why are doctors and nurses deciding to end their careers because they don't want to get the vaccination? Why are we sacrificing our children or grandchildren? Because we want to find out if the vaccine is safe or what? Also, what about, have you asked yourself, is this more population control? Or is this here about health and safety?
Do we have time? And I have to enforce the time rule.
Okay, that's fine.
Is there any further?
Okay, my name is Linda Perlock. Okay, I'm from Marshville, Wisconsin.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Sir, approach the microphone.
My name is Russ Perlock, and what I want to share with you is some stories, unexpected stories and heartbreaking stories. On September 13th, 2021, ABC News fishing expedition on Facebook took a startling turn over a weekend after a reporter asked his readers to share their stories of loved ones who died of COVID after refusing or delaying to get the vaccine. Instead, thousands of readers reported of loved ones who died after the vaccination, and even worse, from adverse reactions from the vaccination. By noon on Monday, the Post had received over 39,000 angry and often heartbreaking responses. Virtually every string contains a firsthand report of people whose families and members are grieving the loss of loved ones of all ages. Some of their stories, "My daughter got the first dose of Moderna, then conceived the baby. My grandson was stillborn with a heart and brain malformations that the Pfizer VP said that that could happen during the 20th and 22nd day of conceiving." Another, "I have a friend that dies after receiving the Pfizer. He went to ER unexpectedly with tremors that day after. They got the tremors stopped and released him. He died the next day." Another, "Reports of heart attacks and stroke abound. My dad started having problems after his first shot, but was bound and determined to get the second shot. He died five days after the second shot of massive heart attack. He had no known heart problems." Another, "My daughter's teacher had immediate severe reactions within 15 minutes of observation period. After that first dose, she was diagnosed with Guillain-Barre syndrome and now has to use a wheelchair." How about the stories on vaccine reactions? Another, "My fully vaccinated husband and I just recovered from COVID and gave it to our unvaccinated children, who we were trying to protect by getting the shots in the first place. How about covering the stories instead of producing more propaganda? So much journalisming." Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I don't see any other public comment, and like I said, we don't answer questions during public comment, but I do want a clarification to sort of... A county does not have the power to issue a mask mandate to the general public. I'm sorry, not a mask mandate, a vaccination mandate. I want to restate that. We do not have the power to mandate vaccination to the general public. There are some workplace rules that could go into effect, but not the general public. Just so if anybody's out there watching thinking we didn't do that. Peter? You just checked the microphone. Okay? All right. Any other, I thought you wanted to make a public comment?
That's fine.
All right. Any other public comment? All right, I don't see any. We'll go to announcements and recognitions on the agenda. We have none there. We will have a special order of business. We'll wrap that after we go through the packet here. So with that said, I think from UW Extension, so with that said, I think we'll get into the packet right away. Today under referrals, we have a memo from Planning and Zoning to the Tonacran Rapids in regard to the comprehensive plan option that was referred to the seat committee. And then we move into the packet on page seven, the Operations Committee meeting of August 17. On pages eight, nine, and 10, we have the Operations Committee meeting of Tuesday, September 7th. That's eight, nine, and 10. Monthly letter of comments from the county clerk Supervisor Wench, I apologize.
There you go. Is that, yep. Anyway, on page seven, you have an interest rate of .66. Is that our interest rate on the mortgage result, Robert?
It is. Correct.
How come we didn't have that before?
Well, we found that out when we had the sale. Do you have dates in front of you?
Yeah, I got the dates up.
Interest rates occur at the time of sale of the bond, so we don't know that until it occurs. It goes out to bid, and it came in at that, the lowest rate I've ever seen, at .66%.
Have they got any points or something that's centered up?
Did they buy that down with any points?
Yeah.
Is that your question? Not to my knowledge, no. Looking at it, looking at it ethically? No, absolutely not.
And then I read, "Seven of our budgets. Each age is a start as it goes all the way through the whole program. We're sending a budget time, but we're not telling you whether they're over or under or even or what. There's a sudden of mine."
Supervisor, may I have your answer? All of those are explained in full at the budget meetings for every one of those different departments as they lay those out in detail.
Yes, they're organized, detailed, draws.
They are. They are. They're in the packet. They were, all the budgets were in the operations packet.
Right, all of them were in there. And basically, we haven't got the total picture yet. We don't know what the total picture is. We have, we have one supervisor on the board who makes it a point to ask each representative of each department when they get up there. The question that you're asking is that, are you over or under budget? Yes, and that continually. We're seeing some over, some under, and we'll find out, we'll find out probably, we've got two budget meetings coming up, one on this Friday and one on next Wednesday. And we'll have a little clearer picture of where things are, and we'll be reporting back to the board and also to the chairs of the standing committees or the oversight committees as to the status if they're, we think something is to change. So anyway, we'll have a little better picture after next, a week from tomorrow.
Okay.
Does that have all of your questions, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, those are on pages eight through 10, and then it goes to the county clerks, monthly letter of comments on 11, 12, and 13. Page 14 through 18 is the monthly letter of comments from the Human Resources Department. Office of the Treasurer, their monthly letter of comments on 19. And then again, without objection, I'd like to take these seven resolutions together. They're all seven, and these are in regard to the sale of tax-deed property back to the owner. Is there any objection to taking these resolutions as a block?
No.
All right, seeing none, Trent, please read the seven.
Okay, starting on page 20, we are at Resolution 21-9-1. Authorize the sale of tax-deed property back to former owner. Fiscal note, paid amount of $306.77. Next page, Resolution 21-9-2. Authorize the sale of tax-deed property back to former owner. Paid amount, fiscal note is a paid amount of $1,896.62. Resolution 21-9-3. Authorize the sale of tax-deed property back to former owner. Fiscal note, paid amount of $5,393.87. Resolution 21-9-4. Authorize the sale of tax-deed property back to former owner. Fiscal note, paid amount, $3,333.10. Resolution 21-9-5. Authorize the sale of tax-deed property back to former owner. Fiscal note, paid amount, $1,625.67. Resolution 21-9-6. Authorize the sale of tax-deed property back to former owner. Fiscal note, paid amount, $7,254.06. Resolution 21-9-7. Authorize the sale of tax-deed property back to former owner. Fiscal note, paid amount, $33,430.83.
All right, you've heard the reading of the resolutions. I have a motion by Supervisor Ballenstein, a second by Supervisor Hamilton. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? All right, I'd ask you to please vote.
Fairman?
Yep, go ahead. Just one moment before you vote, while, or as you're voting. Go ahead.
Could I just ask a question, please? You know, I look at these seven resolutions, and I think about the time and the energy and the effort that was made to tax-deed these properties, and it just kind of upsets me then that the owners come in and pay after we've gone through so much. Is there any possibility that when this happens, they could be charged for some of those efforts that we made and all the times that we took when we tax-deed the property?
Our clerk will answer that question.
Yeah, changing state statutes represented by Rosar.
All right, well, that might be a potential legislative effort. Thank you.
Always a pleasure, Donna. All right, I'll allow you to keep voting, please. Supervisor Rosar, your vote is?
Yes.
Supervisor Fire?
Give him a thumbs up if you... You got a thumbs up?
Okay. All right. Those seven resolutions pass unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the packet, page 27, another resolution from the Operations Committee dealing with the Wood County Investment Policy Clarifications and Statutory References. The policy itself runs all the way through page 33. The clerk will please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 21-9-8. Authorize the sale of tax... Oh, no, we're done with that, aren't we? To amend the Wood County Investment Policy to include clarifications and update statutory references. Fiscal note, none.
All right, I have a motion by Supervisor Bry, a second by Supervisor Hamilton. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask you to please vote.
Roser, yes.
Fire?
Thumbs up or thumbs down, Michael? Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Again, that resolution passed 19-0. All right, moving on in the packet, page 34 and 35, minutes of the Health and Human Services Committee from August 26th. Their minutes from September 2nd, on page 36. An update from the Health Department, pages 37, 8, 9, and 40, 37 through 40, from the Health Department. Monthly letter of comments from the Human Services Department beginning on page 41 and running through page 47. Anybody have any notes on it? 41 through 47. The Veteran Service Departments, their narrative, pages 48 and 49. That brings me to page 50, and a resolution from the Health and Human Services Committee.
This will be Resolution 21-9-9. To create one FTE mental health tech position within the Human Services Department Norwood Health Center budget. The position is currently filled by a contracted staff person. Fiscal note, moving from a contracted position to a Wood County position will save the county $17,963.73 over the remainder of 2021.
Okay, and I have a motion by Supervisor Hamilton, a second by Supervisor Ballenstein. Any questions, Supervisor Glenn Denny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe this goes along with the resolution changing Rule 28, and that's why this can be accomplished. If the Rule 28 would not have been changed, then it would have been up to the county board to authorize this in some way or another. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, I'd ask you to please vote.
Rosar, yes.
Fire, yes. Michael, welcome back. And that resolution again passed 19-0 unanimously. Moving back to the packet, pages 51 through 55, our minutes of the Wood County Public Safety Committee of August 9th. That's 51 through 55. The Traffic Safety Subcommittee meeting, 56 and 57. Humane Officer Reports, beginning on page 58 and running through page 63, 58 to 63, humane officer reports. And then we have a preliminary draft. This is in regard to the Memorial Bridge. I think the Sheriff's Department's done actually testifying on this about a week ago, and there's some background information there, pages 64 through 69, 64 through 69. The monthly report from Sheriff's Rescue, along with every other report from the Sheriff's Department, beginning on page 70 and running through pages... We're having fun. There you go. Again, that resolution passed 19-0. Thank you to those participating virtually. Page 90 to 94, report from the Conservation, Education, Economic Development Committee in regard to grant applications. Those run 90 through 94, 90 through 94. Questions there? Seat Committee, Wednesday, September 1st, beginning on 95 and running through 101, 95 through 101. Golden Sands Resource Conservation Development Council, various minutes of the board itself and its committees, beginning on 102 and running through page 110, 102 to 110. The Census Review and Redistricting Committee, Tuesday, August 17th, meeting on 111. Their public hearing on Monday, September 13th, on pages 112 and 113. Beginning on page 114 is our monthly report from UW Extension, and we're going to have a special order of business with them later, 114 through 118. We have the staff reports from our Land and Water Conservation Department, beginning on 119, and they'll run through pages 125, 119 through 129. 126 begins the report from Planning and Zoning with Director Grunberg, 126. This runs all the way through, a lot of pages are flipped, but through 151. And this is all of the economic development funding requests that went along with that meeting. So extremely long, detailed meeting, and then the background information, 126 through 151. Any questions? Page 152, 3, and 4, the Citizens Groundwater Group Meeting of August 16th. Beginning on page 155, where we have the resolution from the Census Review and Redistricting Committee, and the background information, all of the maps that outline those districts, the supporting information goes all the way through page 174. And I ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 21-9-11. To approve a tentative county board supervisory district boundary plan. Fiscal note, none.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the resolution. I have a motion by Hamilton, I have a second by Bry. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Please vote.
Fire, yes. Donna, yes. I'm sorry, Roser.
Thank you. And that passed unanimously. The other day, at the invitation of Supervisor Glenn Denny and the Towns Association, Trent Minor appeared to talk a little bit about the Census and redistricting. By the way, he did a really good job. I didn't have a chance to say that because he walked out of the room before I got up there, but Trent, do you want to outline that? Do you have that timeline in front of you, or do you have it somewhere memorized?
Sure. So, starting...
Probably should have given a little...
That's all. I thought it was appreciated, Mr. Chairman, but that's fine. So, starting after today, and I'm looking at Jason, he's going to yell at me, "Oh, that works good. Thanks, Ken." Starting today through, I believe it's October 27th, and Supervisor Curry's going to give me the handy-dandy calendar to clarify that it is the 27th of October. All the municipalities need to set their ward boundaries, and they're all their matic districts if they're in the city. And then on October, on November 2nd, the Redistricting Committee is going to meet and review those ward boundaries and complete the final supervisory district plan. And then at the November county board meeting, prior to probably the budget hearing, still to be worked out on that timing, there will be a public hearing for the finalized supervisory district plan. So we're working very closely with our municipal partners to make sure that they have all the information they need so that they can get all their work done in a much shortened timeframe than what would normally happen during a decennial census redistricting process.
Yeah, because I believe we received that data about, what, 60 days late, roughly?
Probably even more than that, yeah. It was about four or five months late. Usually we get it in April, we got it in September, so, or August, September, so, yeah, very late. So there wasn't time for 60 days for the tentative plan to come forward.
Yeah, because I believe we received that data about, what, 60 days late, roughly?
Uh, probably even more than that. Yeah, it was about four or five months late. Usually we get it in April, we got it in September, so, or August, September. So, yeah, very late. So, there wasn't time for 60 days for the tentative plan to come forward. There isn't 60 days for the municipalities to do their work, and there's not 60 days for the county to do their finalized work, so. And this has to be done before I have to publish a Type A notice on November 23rd, so pedal to the metal.
Yeah, we're working really hard to get this done. The legislature looked to have an extension to have these boundaries done, the census work prior to the next election. They were going to have this done in April or May. The governor vetoed that, so we're on a tight timeline. The concern, obviously, are some of the smaller towns, you know, around the state, and how quickly they can get their work done. And again, that's where the town, the municipal clerks in Wood County are extremely complimentary of the help they've received from on purpose. So, Trent, thank you for what you're doing here. Minutes of the Judicial Legislative Committee, September 7th, beginning on 175, runs through 177, and then there's a attendance sheet and a claim with a veterinary hospital on 179. So, 175 through 179 in its entirety. An update from the Child Support Agency from Director Grilling on 180. Corp Counsel's Monthly Letter of Comments on 181. Registered Deeds Office, 182. Victim Witness Services Report on 183. And then that brings us to another resolution in the packet, which is page 184.
This will be Resolution 21-9-12, to change County Board Rule 28 so as to allow oversight committees to approve new positions of employment when the new position is due to converting a fully funded outside contract position, and there will be a cost savings to the county. Fiscal note, there will be an unknown amount of savings to departments by bringing contract positions in-house when the opportunity arises and the result is a savings in costs.
This is what Supervisor Glenn Denny lead to earlier. I have a motion by Supervisor Glenn Denny, a second by Supervisor Hamilton. Any discussion on this resolution? Supervisor Fisher?
I mean, I support this, but I do just want to clarify one aspect. And so, I'm going to point this probably to Peter, to correct me if I'm wrong, but even though the oversight committee can approve this, if it is ever pulled from the minutes at a county board meeting, that position could still, in theory, be overturned, that decision. Is that correct, Peter?
Won't be able to get away with a maybe on this one. So, the county, the county board has the ability to hold the minutes, as you call it, and direct action other than differentiating from what a committee has done. If a committee's hired someone, then it already filled the position, then it becomes a little problematic. So, yeah, probably, the county board probably would have the opportunity to do so, but there might be problems insofar as implementing the county board's decision.
Can I ask a question while I... Would it not be a three-quarters vote, though? Because it is change to a rule.
I can keep responding, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely. That would not be a three-quarters vote because you're not changing the rule, you're simply taking the minutes and saying this is not what we want to do in this instance. I don't think so. I mean, the county board controls its own rules. You could say that this is a deviation from the rules, but your normal rule, if it's two or three, says you can deviate from the rules, and that's only a majority vote. So, what if you get three-quarters or extra or a majority vote?
Thank you, Peter. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, I ask you to please vote.
Fire, yes.
Rosar, aye.
Thank you. That resolution again passed 19-0. Back to the packet, page 185, minutes of the HIRC Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee, 185 and 186, that's the meeting of August 18th. We have a meeting on September 2nd, same committee, pages 187, 8, and 9. Report from the Highway Commissioner, monthly letter of comments on 190 to 194. We have the monthly letter of comments, beginning with Director Schuley's, the Parks Department, beginning on 195 through 198, 195 through 198. The Property Information Technology Committee meeting, August 17th, on 199. Their meeting of September 8th, pages 200 through 202, 200 through 202. And then we have monthly letter of comments and updates from the Information Technology Department on pages 203, 4, 5, and 6, 203 through 206. Letter of comments from our Facilities Manager, Ruben Van Teisel, on page 207. And then we have minutes from the Macmillan Memorial Library Special Board Meeting, August 4th, on page 208. Same group, their meeting August 10th, on 209. August 11th, on 210. Their Board of Trustees meeting of August 18th, on 211, 212, and 213. It's a busy bill. And then we go to the minutes of the South Central Library System Board of Trustees of 722, and that's on 214 and 215. Page 216 is minutes of the J.O. Construction Anhack Committee, and that's 216 and 217. Does anybody else have any questions, anything in the packet? Anything in the packet? All right, at this time then, we'll move forward with our special order business. We have Jason Housler here, the Area Director for Extension. And Jason, I don't know if you're doing this yourself, or if you have a team of people coming up. Well, he's working his way up here. This coming week, we have the Wisconsin Counties Association, the annual Patrants in La Crosse. Everything right now is supposed to be ahead. Trent, do you have some updates there?
Yeah, for those supervisors attending on your desks this morning, please pay attention to that information because your hotel confirmation is on there. Also, my cell phone number in case something snap moves when you get there. I'll be down there probably 3:00, 3:30, 4:00, somewhere in there. So, just give me a call if anything goes wrong. But all the information you need is on your desk.
And then I had an update yesterday from the Governor's Office, who was planning to be a tenant. If anybody's going to approach the Governor, the Governor would prefer that you have a mask on at that time. So, that was his, I don't know, direction to me the other day when I spoke with, or with his staff, and I'll take it directly. Jason, floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Vice Chairman. And thank you, members of the Wood County Board. It's a pleasure to be here this morning with you all, and I do appreciate the time. So, I want to share kind of some highlights from our 2020 year. I know we're almost done with 2021, but as you can imagine, with things this spring and in my schedule, I serve four counties. So, for those that I haven't met personally, I serve as Area Director for your Extension Services here in Wood County, but I also oversee the offices in Marathon, Portage, and Clark Counties. So, with my schedule, I usually, I think back to a couple of years ago, I was with Director Schuley, and we were tag teaming a couple of board presentations, and, but I'm happy to be here this morning. You have an ag report on your, on your desk. It came in a separate email from Trent Minor. I do appreciate him sending that out. I, and it's a separate document, but you have a paper copy in front of you. I'm going to walk through it, not in its entirety, because I want to focus on some other things that 2021 brings us, and the future of Extension Services, not just here in Wood County, but because of some new funding through the biennial budget, the state biennial budget, that will, I guess, augment the services here in Wood County and expand our footprint, if you will, throughout the state. So, so I want to start with our ag educator highlights. So, Matt Lippert is our dairy educator, dairy and livestock educator, and we have Allison Johnjack, who's our cranberry outreach specialist. So, the cranberry specialist position is new in 2020. We're happy to have that on board. It's the first of its kind around the state, and that's thanks to our Oversight Committee and Chair Curry and members of the Seat Committee in supporting this. So, as we know, cranberry is, Wood County is number one in cranberries in the state, and Wisconsin's number one in the country in cranberries. So, extrapolation says Wood County's king in cranberries. So, Allison serves, not just Wood County, but she serves the state. She's partially funded by Wood County and our Extension Office here, but the bulk of her stuff actually comes from our state office and their investment into this, this new ag venture. And I'll kind of explain a little bit more of how Wood County has really been the leader in these outreach specialist positions, and how they will be expanded in the rest of 2021 and into 2022, thanks to the work of Allison and your support here in Wood County. So, a couple of things to note of interest. There was a lot, in 2020, there was a fury of, I guess, just COVID response to the ag industry, and navigating it all for our farmers and producers was a challenge. So, Matt and Allison stepped up to the plate and really addressed that head-on from, from those farms that were dumping milk in 2020 and navigating that, that piece of the puzzle to, is there enough buyers internationally for cranberries? Because we ship a lot overseas. What do those markets look like? So, both Allison and Matt were heavily involved in the COVID mitigation for the ag industry here in Wood County and central Wisconsin. So, I can't thank them enough for, for all their work, but the other stuff didn't stop, right? So, we have farmers that are putting in new automated milking systems. We brought, actually, just prior to, I guess, Safer at Home, flew somebody over from Europe to do some presentations here in central Wisconsin on automated milking systems. That's not necessarily the go-to for a lot of farms, but it is a supplement. So, they have an automated machine, but then still do some in a parlor, and that diversification, it really helps them out. Cranberry field trials, this is, again, a new thing for us locally. Usually our state specialists out of the Madison office would come up and do the field trials, but because Allison is based here out of Wood County, she was able to do a lot of field trials last year to look at disease resistance to some pesticides, looking at, I guess, emerging insects and variations in fruit varieties for cranberries. So, a lot of that stuff continued in 2020 in a, in a different context. Due to supporting our public health, and Sue and her office, we did all the things that were necessary to conduct our programming in 2020. A lot of it was virtual, to be honest, but that was using the best strategies that we had at the time. And so, the virtual brown bank programs were well-received and continue to this day. So, we learned a lot in 2020 about our delivery of our programs, that face-to-face was always the, the best thing, right? We're going to get people in a classroom, we're going to deliver this content. What we found is, hey, if we can meet the farmer right at their house and not actually have to take up too much of their time with, with over the lunch hour, they can get back out in the fields or back in the barn, that was well-received. So, and that included the, the brown bank programs, but also the, the Heart of the Farm program that Matt engages with, with women in agriculture. We know that women, you know, the age of saying is like, yeah, women run the farm, right? They, they keep the trains running, and men are out in the fields and in the barn, but they're, they're really the heart of the farm, and that's where the name comes from. But it's women in agriculture. So, we met those producers where they're at, too. So, a couple of ag highlights there from 2020 and actually into today. I just talked to Allison yesterday, and she, her floor was littered full of trials, cranberry trials, that she's working with the specialist in Madison. Cranberries right from here in Wood County that they can then take and do some research on. Community development, so you're all familiar with Nancy Turp. She's our community development educator. So, a lot of you know Peter Manley for many, many years, and we're happy to have Nancy in, in that position. Working with Jason Grunberg and Planning and Zoning and some other folks with the Ready Project, finalized the first Wood County economic development plan. This is a huge undertaking that actually encompassed almost two years worth of work, I think, with that project. So, her work really kind of paved the way for, for that first plan to be created. And then, kind of like with ag, various shutdowns last year. Those that have went from, you know, from open to closed, and how did, how did that work with some of the, the funds that came down from the federal government to WIDEC to, you name it? To, hey, now we're reopening, but our, our method of consumer has changed, right? They want to get it on the pickup. They want to order online and get it brought to them. They want to, you know, it's the DoorDash's, it's the Uber Eats, those sort of things. Working with those businesses that are local, so how do they expand their program? And that's where Nancy really kind of found some work to do in 2020 and today, because that's an ever-evolving piece. Clean sweep, thanks to the, the board for helping to fund that. That happened up at the UW Marshfield Research Station on Yellowstone Drive, another great venue, a different way of delivery, but that also continues. And then the, the Central Sands Groundwater Collaborative, Supervisor Lightnum and some of these other folks are part of that. Nancy, along with Nathan Sandlook, out of Portage County Office, helped to lead that effort and continue to this day. And that's brought in stakeholders from multiple counties focusing on groundwater. And I'm happy to report that something new for 2021, it was just unveiled that, or unveiled that Extension has created a new agriculture water program as a result of your efforts and resolutions to improve groundwater, both in Wood County and the Central Sands area, and in some other folks. And so, it's a brand-new program. You heard, I think, this spring from John Exo and Doug Rindman at a board meeting, and their work has really paved the way for a new program, and that's a direct result of your work here on the board level to have Extension work in the groundwater area. So, it's a brand-new program. John Exo is actually leading it with another counterpart. So, it's a brand-new piece that I'm happy to report is a, is a direct result of your work here, supporting the work of our Extension educators and the Central Sands Groundwater Collaborative. So, new initiative there in 2021. Human Development Relationships, it's the old family living program, if you're familiar with that, Jackie Karatini's position. She spent a lot of time in 2020, even to today, helping individuals and organizations cope with the struggles of the pandemic, whether it's loss of jobs and rethinking their financial capabilities, to, hey, my kids are quarantined, and I don't have anybody watching my kids, what do I do? And stress is at an all-time high. I think numerous studies have shown that we are a stressed-out society, and people have reached out to her and said, hey, our organization wants to do something with, for our employees. What can you do? And there's a program called Taking Care of You, and it focuses on the individual as part of the collective and working on the stress reducers pieces. So, that is, she's actually doing another series right now on that, because it, we haven't, that hasn't subsided. So, the financial literacy, again, loss of employment, a lot of people were laid off. Some people actually got, I guess, stimulus money that they never had an influx of that much money in their life, and so, what do you do with an influx of money? Instead of just spending it on frivolous stuff, can you invest it for long-term strategies? So, a lot of one-on-one coaching, but also collective pieces. So, Head Start will bring in Jackie and do some work with the Head Start families, and all the other organizations, too, United Way, et cetera. And then a lot of coalition work. So, from coalition work to get food where it was needed, and that's some of the gleaning projects from the farmers' markets to coalitions on, on eating healthy and being fit and the Swepps Food Pantry and all those sort of things. She was engaged in a lot of those things, because there was, there was an influx. You know, one of the things that I, I learned personally throughout the last two years is the, the community engagement. While people were struggling, there was a sense of, we're in this together, and there was a flurry of different things that came in, and what do we do with it all? Flurry of food, for food pantries, flurry of donated goods for those that have lost jobs, like apparel and, you know, shirts and hats and shorts and whatever. She worked with coalitions to get out to those that needed. So, she was highly involved in a lot of those things, and it continues to this day. Natural Resources, this is Rachel Whitehair. This is a newer position for Wood County over the last couple of years, to again, focus on some of the water quality work and making sure that we're, we are, we are good stewards of the land, not just from an ag side of things, but even in, you know, for our young people, how they know where their groundwater comes from and how they have an impact on that. So, she's been working with the farmers, Farmer-led watershed groups, so Farmers of Mill Creek, Farmers for Tomorrow, which is in Portage County, but she's, she's half-time in Wood County and half-time regional through DNR. So, she's got a wealth of resources that she can bring in from both, both sides, the Extension piece and the DNR piece, to really help the constituents here in Wood County make sure that we are being good stewards of the land and how it impacts our, our water quality. She partnered with Land and Water on the Central Wisconsin Farm Profitability Expo, a great venture that way, to really look at, you know, if you want to do no-till drilling and planting, what is the profitability of that long-term? Here's the benefits for, for farming, but here's also the benefits for your, your bottom line. And so, she's done a lot in that work with, with Shane and Land and Water. And then lastly, telling the conservation stories of, of Wood County. So, I don't know if you all know John Aaron, a huge proponent of, of land ethic and, you know, I would say descendant of Aldo Leopold to some extent. I mean, telling the stories of conservation practices here in Wood County that it, people sometimes feel they're on an island, like, I'm the only one that's doing this, right? This is, this is my story. She's helped to compile those in a video series, that then people can... And then people can take and move forward with them and say, hey, he's doing it. I'm going to get on board with this too. And when you start, you know, as I say, it's a snowball. You start, you know, building a snowball and you roll it down a hill, it gets traction, right? And that's the hope with telling these stories too. Horticulture, a huge, I guess, program here in Wood County. You have some of the largest, the largest one in central Wisconsin for sure. But even in the region of master gardener volunteers donating over, so we have 40 certified volunteers, not just people that show up at a site to do some gardening. These are certified master gardeners that went through an extensive training and they've committed over 2,000 hours in 2020. And that was during, you know, organizations that they used to partner with that said, yeah, we're going to opt out this year, don't come back. They still donate over 2,000 hours. So, so Janelle Ware is our hort educator. She is one of the leading people in the state in a new program called Foundations in Horticulture. This is an online program that was, again, a benefit of 2020 and going online is that it allows us to diversify our delivery. Instead of just all in person, you know, after hours, you have to sit in a classroom, basically you can do some online with this Foundations of Horticulture program and some in person and really kind of a blend ed model. And we're getting a lot of traction with that, and she's been doing some great things. She started a program in 2020 that still continues right now. She's offering it, I think, three times now since. It's an eight week series, Remain Calm and Garden On. It's a play on, you know, remain calm and keep on sort of thing. And it's focusing on what kind of farming or, excuse me, what kind of horticulture can you engage in? Whether you live in the city or the country, with what resources you have. So she's worked with a group to do some pop up produce kits, so pup kits, and getting materials donated to then get out to the people that may have never been involved in horticulture at all. But through grant dollars, she's able to kind of infuse that energy into Wood County and learn some things that, you know, with, I just was at Fleet Farm the other day and the canning section, canning section, it says a limit of two on all the canning stuff, right? Because we've all kind of went back from, hey, we all bought it at the store and being removed from agriculture and horticulture to, hey, everybody wants to can their own stuff. You know where their meat's coming from. And this is where they had some traction in Wood County here. So kudos to her and her work in that area. Foodwise, Foodwise is our federal program. It's no cost to Wood County is through the SNAP education dollars that come to the state to then be administered through Extension. We have Hannah Wendell, who's our full time educator, and then Kelly Hammond, who's our coordinator, who serves both Portage and Wood Counties. And again, this is a hundred percent federally funded program. The cost to Wood County is an office space and a computer. And you get a full time, you know, one and a half FTEs through this program. So primarily school based education on foods and nutrition. 2020 was a challenge for them, to say the least. They weren't allowed in classrooms, a lot of virtual education. So the picture you see up there and in your packet is Hannah created a virtual classroom and kind of animated herself that's almost a spinning image of Hannah. It's amazing what artificial intelligence can do. But then students can click at their own pace through these lessons and it helps teachers supplement their open time. So they were saying, yep, I need to, you know, because students were staying in the classroom all day. They weren't, they're going outside for recess, but they weren't traveling from classroom to classroom and those sort of things. This is like, hey, I need a filler hour or I'm going to put this on for the next three or four weeks. We were prepackaged, ready to go. Here you go. It's videos created by Hannah and the Foodwise team, lesson plans, take home, grab and goes, materials that were brought in, so assembling materials in our office, dropping it off at the school, and then the teachers can use that in their classroom. So. Lastly, not least, our 4H Youth Development Program. This is kind of the gold star, if you will, that people always think of it when they think of extensions, the 4H program. Again, primarily a face to face contact program through the community club programs, through our summer camp programs, through the fair, through a lot of different interactions that way. That was a challenge in 2020. We did see, and it's no secret, that 4H participation around the state dropped in 2020 by about 25%. On the flip side of it, so did FFA. So even our school based programming in agriculture, FFA also got almost the same level. Now, I'm happy to report in 2021, we rebounded. I don't know those exact numbers right now, but we're entering a new 4H program year and our numbers are up from where they were last year. So there's a dip, but we're coming on in the backside stronger than we've ever been. So with no in person summer camp in 2020, we did have summer camps in 2021 here with some day camps, not overnight camps, but a plethora of day camp experiences. So we didn't have to mitigate any overnight experiences in June when we were kind of coming out of some of the pieces. But Laura was a leader in a huge program called Camp in a Box. And actually has now gone on to win a national award from the National Association of 4H Educators. And she'll be recognized at a conference next month, I think, in Memphis for her leadership in taking a camp experience and how do you do it virtual? We really can't do it face to figure over a screen. You got to give them the tools and the materials to do it at home. So what you see on the picture here is our people that have sent in pictures of the camp experience that they engaged in through the dissemination of over 400 boxes. I think it was 400 families with more than 400 boxes, I forget. But the reach was exponential. But she was a pivotal leader in getting that program started and executed and off the ground. And the institute director, Matt Kelver, actually reached out to her just yesterday to congratulate her, and he wants to take something like that and expand statewide. So kudos to her and her work in that regard. The community club program is strong, again, 600 members, that's 2020 numbers, so that's down. We usually average around 700 to 750 upwards of 800. So I anticipate that's going to keep on going up. So just please know that, that we're kind of in a dip right now, but we're coming back stronger on the backside. And she was able to expand to some new programming opportunities, so special interest clubs. And actually, these are still ongoing after 2020. One is a Lego program. It's a virtual program on a Sunday afternoon. And I see, Supervisor, I'm trying to think of this, Lego program. So on a Sunday afternoon, kids that have a love of Legos, they can get on virtually, that maybe somebody's in Marshfield and Rapids and Pittsville, whatever else. And they can build together virtually on a special interest program that they like and take it to the next level. And it's, it's not a commitment long term. You can come whenever it's convenient for you. You got something going on a Sunday, you can't make it this week, that's great. But join us next week. And so every kid has a different interest. And this is another way for us to reach those youth that may feel like, well, I like Legos, but nobody else in my club likes Legos. This is another venture for to bring the county together. And there's, there's other things that she's kind of looking at this year. And actually, actually, I'm going to be with her tomorrow. But there's a new program that she's going to be, with her and our HCR educator, Jackie and some other folks, Spanish or Latinx 4H program up in the Marshfield area. Again, special, I guess, special club, because they're not going to meet like a traditional community club, you know, every other month, or excuse me, once a month on a Monday night. It's going to be, I guess, site based and it's different. It's, it's a new way to get the principles of our 4H program out to youth that we've traditionally never engaged with or never met. So kudos to her and her work in that arena. So with all that said, Extension educators here in Wood County leverage the statewide network. So while we have educators in every county, it's really the network that you buy into. So the work that you get here from your local educators is reciprocated through state specialists. So I'll go back to the water piece. You know, John Exo and the water program has been highly engaged with Wood County at no cost to you, but because you buy into Extension services, you get the network. And that's an ever expanding network. And I'm happy to report that in the last biennium, there was a million dollars appropriated to Extension each of the next two years to build out this network. Regional outreach specialists to specialize in different high needs, I guess, program areas. So for instance, you know, water quality is a huge thing. There's a chance that there's going to be a water quality specialist created and placed here in the Central Sands area. You know, your beef and livestock, you know, you look at some of the northern, western part of the state with some of their hog operations and production facilities. You know, the specialists up there may be important in that regard. And actually, yesterday on a WCA call, our dean and director, Carl Martin, and Heidi Johnson, our institute director, laid out that kind of plan of action for the rest of 2021 and into 2022 and engaged WCA in a conversation about that. So the network is expanding. And I can't thank you enough for your investment on a local level, but there's so much more that you're getting too, that sometimes we don't see. And I just want to make you aware of that. And every chance I have to highlight that, I want to make sure I do. Funding, I think this is the ultimate piece of like, well, how much does it cost? And where are you getting your money from? And what does that look like? I think Supervisor Winch's question, our 2022 budget is projected to come under. So that's, that's great. Always saving the money. And I think that's a, that's a benefit to the county that I was able to negotiate some increased state funding to offset our 4H program. So we're coming in under budget than what we did this year, always good sort of taxpayer dollars. But it really is a 50 50 split. Try to, try to maintain that 50 50 split. So what you see in your budget packet will list Extension at, you know, 450,000. But a true cost for all that you're getting locally, not even the state specialists, which is notated down below, is half. So you pay about half time the educator, a full time educator's salary infringes. So for an educator, you're paying around $44,000 for a full time educator. And so I know that Rule 28 change about contracted services to a county position. I think this is a good testament of contracted services really being to the benefit of the county and saving the county dollars to maximize your reach. So that's kind of laid out that way. We do grants and fees, we try to get that up every year. But some of our, some of our things, some of our grant dollars are actually procured at the state level and they don't really come into the county budget. But we leverage those from the state office that way. So we try to maintain that 50 50 split as best we can. And so that pie chart will change next year. More investment from the state to really maintain that 50 50 split. And then lastly, leveraged funding. We could not do, we do an extension without our volunteers. Master gardener volunteers, 4H volunteers, some of the HCD time we look at. But if I do a quick calculation, I think some of the 4H volunteers would say, yep, I give $5 a month, and some would say, I give $20 a month to the 4H program. But conservatively, if we do some quick calculation of our number of volunteers, 190 volunteers, $5 a month at 12 months, that's giving back to the Wood County community about $325,000 in volunteer service through what we do and how we leverage those volunteers to the benefit of our Wood County constituents. So with that, I want to thank you for your time. Thanks for allowing me to the floor today to kind of give you a quick update of where we're at with Extension and where we're going. And Supervisor, Mr. Chairman, I would entertain any questions.
Supervisor Ashbeck.
You know, being here or not, without it, our problem immediately is out there, we don't get enough information out to these farmers. Like when we introduced the no till drill to the county, every year the demand is getting greater and greater for it. We got products out there now, like we call it a pivot bio, that's a liquid you put in a corn grinder or it takes the nitrogen from the air and puts it in the corn through the microbes of the soil instead of buying commercial fertilizer. We have to, we have to learn this through our feed companies. We are learning this through the county. These feed companies are way, way ahead of us, the colony, as far as giving knowledge to these farmers. There's things we should bring into this county that are new, that we don't know about, unless you go up to the crops, to the feed companies.
Thank you, Supervisor Ashbeck. I think.
Nancy, I don't know if this is a great answer to that, but yesterday on that leadership call, you know, Carl Martin talked about the amount of dollars and the effort they're going to put into extending and expanding the number of people engaged in the agriculture and of Extension. And that was one of the topics on that call. So I think that's a problem maybe they recognize.
Yeah, exactly. So I was just going to say almost the exact same thing is, we recognize that. It's hard when you have a private entity, I'll call it a private entity, a COOP that can invest, have more money in one area than maybe we can right now. But this is going to be a shot in the arm for Extension, the million dollars each year to do that. And I think your point about the no till drill being available, I think that's something we can do with Land and Water. They have that no till drill to make sure we're publicizing that more and working with Land and Water.
Because you got products out there like wind power, solar energy, geothermal is 100% health efficient and is all renewable, all of it there, there's a natural resource that's going to run out. And we haven't got enough push torque for that kind of stuff. Our area and our quality in Saratoga would be much better than it would be with solar power than it would be in Weston with the power plant. And we got to dip into, push more of that into, get to their quality by with solar power and that to improve that.
Supervisor, I'd like to add.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm just wondering, not to say that, not being, but what is the ag agent function nowadays? I remember when I was younger, I mean, they used to come right out to the farms and now they have. I just don't see it. And I think the radio to answer Supervisor Asbeck's question, you know, you know, what are you doing to advertise it? I think seeing the ag agent on the radio is a good idea, you know, and get that message out.
Yeah, so thank you, Supervisor, for that. Our staff are on both radio stations, WFHR out of Rapids here and also WDLB out of Marshfield. Every Tuesday, we rotate through educators, so our ag educators on there and vice versa. So that's great, I appreciate that. I let them know that, you know, the radio, you're listening to that. Hopefully you are listening to that, it's every Tuesday for an hour, Tuesday for the hour. And then also Thursdays with WFHR. To your question about the ag educators role right now, I think that's, that has changed, you're right. And that was highlighted on the WCA call yesterday. So Matt Lippert is half time here in Wood County, half time in Clark County, focusing on dairy and livestock. And so I thought about the automation, it looks different. It used to be, you know, when, when Extension was founded by, with E.L. Luther being the first ag educator in the county over 100 years ago, it was your, I'm going to show up on your farm, we're going to do a lot of different things, and then I'm going to leave and come back, I'll check in you within a month. Farmers, what we're hearing from them is, is we don't need you to check in on us. We need up to me research and where we're going to, Supervisor Asbeck's question about the new things that are coming out. But our staff do still go out to farms and have those one on ones if they're allowed on. I think the one thing that has prevented more of that one on one on farm is the biosecurity practices of some of these larger farms to just allow anybody in their doors, and that includes our staff at times because of tight cleanliness and sanitation and those sort of things. So it's, but we still do that. And a lot of it's around the kitchen table sort of thing when they're allowed in. So good question, and it's changing too. I think that's, that's what we heard yesterday is, it's going to change, it has to change because we can't do the same thing because we're kind of behind a little bit in some of these ag fronts because of the lack of investment in that area, which now we have more investment in that area.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, this is Donna, I have a question.
Go ahead, Donna.
So Jason, when I'm out and about, I was glad to see your numbers on the 4H program. But I have heard from certain people that they feel like there's an attempt to get rid of 4H clubs and they're kind of disappointed in some of the support that the 4H clubs are getting. Can you just comment on that? And do you see any attempt to get rid of 4H clubs? And do you think that the new structure of the UW Extension, there's as much support for 4H clubs in counties?
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Rosar, and I've heard the same thing. So I appreciate that what I'm hearing is very consistent with what you're hearing. It also hurts my heart that that's what we're hearing. I mean, that's, that's really what it is. I think what I can tell you from my experience with those comments is what I usually hear attached to this, UW Madison is trying to kill the 4H program. And I think if we go back to 2019, when the old organization. And I think if we go back to 2019, when the old organization, I'll call it the old organization of Extension, which was with colleges, when colleges went to a parent institution, we went to Madison. Madison wanted cooperative Extension. Inevitably, with, with any partnership you have, right? Both, both sides need to come together and learn from each other, right? So Madison was learning from Extension about what we are all about, our 100 years of tradition and history. And at the same time, we were also learning about Madison's policies and procedures. And especially when it comes to youth programming at the Madison campus and their youth engagement and outreach programs, there's different policies and procedures. So how do you, how do you marry the two together? Well, during the marriage, I'll call it, there has been some trials and tribulations and volunteers have felt, I guess, there's a lack of trust right there and I'll, I'll call it what it is, there's a lack of trust right now with some volunteers of, I did this, this way for 30 years and why now do I have to change this? Why do I have to go through this, you know, mandated reporter training? And why do I have to go through a vulnerable populations protocol? And, and why do I have to follow this policy or that policy? Well, it comes down to a lot of, I guess, legal ease, you know, and different procedures that we had to blend our old Extension protocol to the future of youth programming throughout the state. And it's caused a lot of tension. No, Madison is not trying to kill the 4H program. Let me be clear on that. Madison is not trying to thwart community club programming, you know, kill the 4H brand. In fact, our, our chancellor, Rebecca Blank, holds 4H up as much, as much as she can to say, hey, we're involved in these programs and our specialists are integrated and should be working with the 4H program. But I think to the, the volunteer aspect of things, Supervisor Rosar, you, you're hearing what I'm hearing. And how do we fix it? I don't have a, a magic pill or a silver bolt right now to, to say this is going to, we're going to fix it and this is how. But it comes down to relationship building and building that trust back. I think during 2020 and a lot of our lockdowns and, and protocols to prevent the spread of COVID-19, some clubs really felt that they were disenfranchised and not connected and, and that's led to some angst. And from a local level, Laura is, is doing everything that she possibly can to build back some of these programs, some of these clubs with some of those leaders and, and reestablish those, those strong connections. But inevitably, when you, you have two parties that had maybe two distinct paths and you bring them together, there's going to be a, a couple of tension points throughout that, that coupling, I'll call it. And I think that's where some of the volunteers, not all of them, because there are some that are like, this is, I'm so glad that X, Y and Z is happening. And this is for the betterment, for the best interests of our kids, this is happening. So that's awesome. But yeah, I, I've heard it and I appreciate you bringing that forward and something that we're strongly working on right now as we speak in our new 4H program here.
So thank you and I will do my best to reinforce out in the community what you all are trying to do with that new program. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any others? How does it look like? Jason, thank you very much. Appreciate you doing, doing with County. All right. That runs us through our regular business here. Is there anything else that needs to come before the board? Next meeting is October 19th, same place. So with that said, I guess we will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.